I would like to call to order the October 19th, 2020 Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners regular meeting. Welcome everyone. It's good to have all of you online with us tonight. Before we get started, I wanted to mention our opportunities for folks to participate in public comments as well as a public hearing that we have scheduled tonight. There are three different ways that you can do that. You can, first of all, you can email publiccomment@cabarruscounty.us to submit a comment by email to be read during the meeting. You also can call in on the telephone to participate in public comments and that number And I'll repeat that, 704-920-2023. And then the third option is you may go in person to our regular meeting chambers where there is a camera and a microphone set up and participate in that way. So that's three different ways that folks can participate in our public hearing as well as our public comment. So we will move now to our agenda and first up is the approval or correction of our minutes. And all of you have a copy of those before you. Do I hear a motion to approve the meeting minutes as presented?
I'll move.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Honeycutt and a second by Commissioner Schu to approve the meeting minutes as presented. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. And that motion passes and we move now to approval of the agenda. And you will all notice some changes that have been made since our work session and those are listed on page 12 of our agenda. So do I hear a motion to approve the meeting agenda including the changes on page 12?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we approve the agenda as presented, including the changes and any discussion on that change.
I'll second.
Great, we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented, including the changes. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. And that motion passes unanimously. We move now to recognitions and presentations and first up is a proclamation for Red Ribbon Week. The Mecklenburg County Young Marines Chapter has requested the board to adopt a proclamation in observance of Red Ribbon Week, October 23rd through 31, 2020. Red Ribbon Week focuses on drug prevention efforts and supports a drug-free environment. We have done this for a number of years and it certainly is a good program and I have that proclamation that I will read now. Whereas communities across America have been plagued with illicit drug use and those that traffic into them and whereas there is a war on drugs and that hope lies in education and drug demand reduction coupled with the hard work and determination of organizations such as the Mecklenburg County Young Marines of the Marine Corps League to foster a healthy, drug-free lifestyle and whereas governments and community leaders know that citizen support is one of the most effective tools in the effort to reduce the use of illicit drugs in our communities and whereas the red ribbon has been chosen as a symbol commemorating the work of Enrique Kiki Camarena, a Drug Enforcement Administration Special Agent who was murdered in the line of duty and represents the belief that one person can make a difference. And whereas the Red Ribbon Campaign was established by Congress in 1988 to encourage a drug-free lifestyle and involvement in drug prevention and reduction efforts and whereas October 23rd through 31 has been designated National Red Ribbon Week which encourages Americans to wear a red ribbon to show their support for a drug-free environment. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners do hereby recognize October 23rd through 31 as Red Ribbon Week in Cabarrus County and urges all citizens to join in this special observance. So do I hear a motion that we adopt the proclamation that I just read?
I'll move.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Kiger and I didn't hear that second.
I'll second it.
Second, Commissioner Honeycutt, is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. And that motion passes unanimously and we move now to item C2 from Planning and Development, Weatherization Day 2020. And we are happy to have Kelly Sifford with us to talk about that proclamation.
Thank you. So every year we celebrate Weatherization Day, October 30th. It is a national event and every year we put a proclamation up for the board to choose to adopt. It is worded like this, Proclamation of Weatherization Day 2020. Whereas October is National Energy Awareness Month and October 30th designated as National Weatherization Day. And whereas the county of Cabarrus has a longstanding commitment to conserve its resources and to help low-income households through its Weatherization Assistance Program and whereas the state of North Carolina has administered the Weatherization Assistance Program since its inception in 1976, providing a variety of state and federal resources through numerous community action agencies, housing authorities, and departments of local governments that serve in every county in the state. And whereas it's important to recognize the importance of those programs and ensure all those, especially those at a lower poverty level, have the opportunity to live in the efficient, healthy, safe, and comfortable homes as provided by the Weatherization Assistance Program. Now therefore it be proclaimed that the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners do hereby recognize October 30th as Weatherization Day and in the county of Cabarrus and urge all citizens to join the observance and that's adopted this day, October 19th of 2020. Steve, you're muted.
Thank you. I didn't realize I had gotten muted. Do I hear a motion that we adopt the proclamation that we just heard from Kelly proclaiming Weatherization Day 2020?
Motion approved.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Schu, second by Commissioner Kiger. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no.
Aye.
Okay, and that motion passes. And we move now to item C3 from Veterans Services and we are happy to have Tony Miller with us for our Veterans Day proclamation. Have not checked to see if Mr. Miller is with us. He was scheduled to be.
I don't believe he is. If you would mind to read his proclamation.
Okay, very good. We do have a proclamation for Veterans Day 2020. Whereas America was founded on the principles of liberty, opportunity, and justice for all and whereas America has called on her men and women in uniform to protect our national security, to preserve our rights and freedoms, and keep our democracy safe. And whereas through their steadfast defense of America's ideals, our service members have ensured that our country still stands strong, our founding principles still shine, and nations around the world know the blessings of freedom. And whereas on Veterans Day, November 11th, 2020, we recognize the men and women of our armed forces who valiantly defended these values throughout our nation's history and whereas we also remember and pay tribute to the American Armed Forces whose courage and sacrifice secures our freedom, keeps the peace, and defends our values around the world. Now therefore, the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim November 11th, 2020 as National Veterans Day and call upon our citizens to always remember and honor our veterans and those who continue to serve this country so willingly to preserve principles of justice, freedom, and democracy for all. And so do I hear a motion to approve the proclamation as read?
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Honeycutt and a second by Commissioner Schu to approve the proclamations declaring Veterans Day. Is there any discussion?
No discussion, but I'd like to point out that our Commissioner Schu is a veteran and we certainly do appreciate his service to his country.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Kiger. I appreciate that nice comment. Of all the things that I ever done in my life, I feel like the United States Army was one of the best things I ever done and I'm proud to be a veteran and I'm proud for the way that Americans treat veterans these days. We've come a long ways and I appreciate our Veterans Department and appreciate Tony for getting that resolution to us.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you. We move now to our informal public comments. As I mentioned at the beginning of our meeting, there are three ways to participate. The first is to come in person to our meeting chambers where there is a camera and a microphone. The second is to send an email comment that can be read during our meeting. And then the third is to call in on the telephone number that I gave earlier, which is 704-920-2023. And if you call in, the PIN number on that is 1234. I think that even though I failed to announce that PIN number earlier in the meeting, I think that does appear on our webpage with instructions as to how people can participate and these same methods also apply to the public hearing that will be coming during our new business portion of our meeting. So at this time, I'll ask our clerk, Lauren Linker, to report if there have been any emails or if there are any calls for public comments.
There is no one currently in the chamber. There's no one to speak on the phone and I have not received any written comments either.
Okay, thank you very much. If that should change after having given out that phone number again, let us know and we will be sure to accommodate folks. Next up is our approval of our consent agenda and of course, these are all items that we have discussed at length at our work session two weeks ago. So do I hear a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Kiger, a second by Commissioner Schu. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. And that motion passes and we move now to new business. And the first item on our agenda is an economic incentive agreement with the city of Concord. This will involve a public hearing, but Jonathan Marshall will introduce that item to us and then we have several other guests that I think might want to speak on that as well. So I'll turn it over to you, Jonathan.
Thank you, Commissioner Morris. Just as a way of background, this is a proposed economic development incentive with the city of Concord. The city in turn is proposing to enter into an agreement with the private development group. The development as a whole is roughly $50 million of private investment in downtown Concord. It does entail residential units, almost 300 residential units, but it should be pointed out that more than half of those have workforce rent rates as they're defined to make them more affordable. There is over 15,000 square feet of retail included or commercial retail included with this. It's the development and/or redevelopment of three parcels, 30 Market Street, which of course runs between Spring and Market, 26 Union Street, the former city hall site, and then 25 Barbrick Avenue, a parcel owned by the county that is the wrap or the area directly adjacent to our parking deck. The way these development agreements work, we would actually be selling that parcel for its appraised value to the city of Concord. Now I should note that Steve Osborne and Joseph Beasley with the city of Concord are both available, so do you have any questions? Then in addition, the mayor, Bill Dush, and Seth Meltzer with the development group are both here and are prepared to speak and would like to add some comments. So Commissioner Morris, I didn't know if you wanted to take those in the public hearing themselves or invite them to make their comments now?
I think we can go ahead and invite them to make their comments now that may prompt some comments during the public hearing. So we would certainly be delighted to hear from them and we will let Mayor Dush start that off.
Thank you very much, Chairman Morris, County Commissioners, County Manager Downs and Attorney Rich Cook. And Jonathan, we appreciate you giving some time to talk about this. I'm here to speak in support of the proposed inner local agreement, which will incentivize prostate $50 million investment in downtown Concord. LMG project will create important market rate and workforce residential units as well as brand-new commercial space in the heart of downtown. This project will transform three unused publicly-owned properties into mixed-use buildings that will contribute towards downtown Concord revitalization. It will help the downtown economy thrive by creating more jobs and opportunities as well as expanding our city and county tax base. LMG's investment will act as a catalyst for additional private investment. Already, new businesses are citing this project as well as streetscapes and other things that are going on downtown. LMG has made great progress in downtown Conapolis and we're excited to be part of the positive progress we're making for Concord. The revitalization project was possible with your support, so thank you very, very much on behalf of myself and the City Council of Concord. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Dush. We appreciate you being with us. Mr. Osborne and Mr. Beasley, do you have things you'd like to add?
No, Sir Chairman Morris, Members of Commission, we're just here to answer any questions and Seth Meltzer is also tuning in from LMG. We just really appreciate the support. It's been a pleasure working with your staff. It's been two years in the making and we're real excited if approvals proceed tonight and also through November with city council and back to county commissioners. We're expecting to close in November and start work in December, so we're getting close.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, if I could just add, hi, Seth Meltzer here on behalf of the Lansing-Melbourne Group team. Just wanted to thank the county commissioners for your support for this agreement tonight. It's what makes this project possible, so we're just really excited to be participating in the revitalization of downtown Concord. Appreciate your support.
Great, thank you, sir. Commissioners, do you have any questions for any of these gentlemen regarding this project before we move to our public hearing? Excellent, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure I heard him correctly. Did he say they're planning on starting in December of 2020?
That's right around the corner, so that's pretty soon. Well, as you all know, you know, we certainly have been supportive, have participated in the revitalization of downtown Conapolis. LMG has been a big part of that and continues to be. And so we are, I personally am very happy to have the opportunity to do this in another of our municipalities. This bill's tax base for the city and the county supports our taxpayers here in the county as well as generates additional sales tax and retail growth and convenience for our citizens, so it is a positive thing in my opinion, all the way around. So we appreciate the partnership and the opportunity to collaborate on this. Commissioners, anyone else have questions or comments before we move to our public hearing?
No questions. I will just echo what you said. I think it's an exciting opportunity and it's great to see it downtown Concord with the changes that are coming our way that are just enhance our community.
Absolutely.
We're big fans of Cabarrus County. Great.
We are too.
Chairman, I can add to it just a little bit. You know, one of the things that thrills me, I guess, more than anything, I mean, all the things that you've mentioned that's going to benefit downtown Concord and the county, but I guess one of the things that really gets me excited is the collaboration that we have been able to develop with the city of Concord and the city of Conapolis and other municipalities. And you know, this is only going to make Cabarrus County a much stronger place to live and a much better place to live where everybody's efforts trying to work together. You know, when you got everybody pulling the wagon in the same direction, it seems to make things a whole lot easier. So I appreciate the partnership and the collaborative effort that we've all tried to establish for the last number of years. So I'm happy for everybody involved.
Thank you for those comments. That only happens if you've got willing teams and we've been very fortunate to have that. Any other comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, this does call for a public hearing. So at this time, I will open the public hearing and I will call on our clerk, Lauren Linker, to see if we have any comments that have been submitted by email, anyone on the phone or anyone in the chambers. Lauren?
Yes, Sir, there is no one in the chambers at this time. There is no one on the phone and I have not received any written comments.
Okay, thank you very much. Having received no comments, we will now close the public hearing and we certainly appreciate all of you for being willing to join us tonight and make those comments. I think that that at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the Economic and Development Incentive Agreement between Cabarrus County and the city of Concord and to authorize the county manager to execute the agreement on behalf of Cabarrus County, subject to review or revisions by the county attorney.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Schu, a second by Commissioner Honeycutt. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. We move now to item G2 from the sheriff's office declaring K-9 Igor surplus property and we are happy to have Chief Deputy James Bailey with us to talk about that.
Yes, so we have a three-year-old German Shepherd that due to some behavioral issues, we are going to have to take him out of service. We do have the original trainer that we received the dog from that is willing to accept responsibility for the K-9, so that kind of solves some issues for us as far as what to do with K-9 Igor. So I just texted our team leader. I have not yet received a waiver from the kennels, so any stipulation as far as transfer of ownership, if we could do that upon receipt of the waiver and the $1 fee that's paid for the surplus.
Excellent, thank you. Does anybody have questions for Chief Bailey? Okay, very good. Well, at this time, I would entertain a motion to declare K-9 Igor surplus property and authorize disposition in accordance with the county's policy pending the waiver that Chief Bailey mentioned earlier.
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Kiger, a second by Commissioner Schu. Is there any further discussion?
Just one quick question for the deputy and that is, will we get a replacement for Igor?
We are looking at a replacement. Obviously, we have to work through some of the financial parts of that, but we do plan on getting a replacement for Igor. And I just wanted to make note that as part of the waiver that I have asked to be signed by the trainer, it does stipulate that he will be given a home or retrained and given another duty with another agency somewhere down the road. So we did want to make sure and ensure that the K-9 will be cared for after it left our possession.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you, Chief Bailey.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, we move now to item G3 from the Department of Human Services, discussion regarding mental health services in the county. We are very happy to have Karen Calhoun to lead off that discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to start off. Again, we appreciate you allowing us to add this to the agenda. Again, it is for mental health or behavioral management services. We currently are contracting with Cardinal Innovations for this service. And however, over the years, we've had issues of performance and concerns on some of our citizens and getting the proper care in the proper amount of time. So we've had issues, we've tried to correct them, but we're moving forward now with a recommendation to disengage Cardinal Innovations. recommendation to disengage Cardinal Innovations and move in future partnership with Partners Behavioral Health Management. Again, this is a process that is regulated by statutes and we have to follow that. And in order to do so, we would have to move forward and it would have to be approved at the state level with Secretary Cohen. So I'm going to turn it over to Karen. She's going to explain more detail what the process is and some more of the issues that we've talked about over the last few years and months. But then also the process, the steps we need to take, the steps you as a board need to take along the way to make this happen. And I'll turn it over to Karen Calhoun, who is the Director of Human Services for the county.
Thank you, Mr. Downs, and good evening, Commissioners. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. So let me give you a little a little bit of background and context for the action items we are bringing before you this evening. Cabarrus County is assigned to Cardinal Innovations Healthcare Local Management Entity Managed Care Organization, LME MCO. You will hear that phrase quite a bit tonight. And I wanted to clarify what that actually stands for. We are one of 20 counties in the Cardinal catchment area. The North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services contracts with LME MCOs to manage behavioral health care services paid for with federal, state, and county tax dollars. The sources of these funds also include Medicaid, which is a predominant funder of some of the behavioral health services. The local management entities, managed care organizations throughout the state provide Medicaid-covered behavioral health care services to residents covered by Medicaid. And we have approximately, just to kind of give you an idea of numbers, we have 47,600 individual recipients receiving Medicaid. And of that population, the special population that we serve with the Department of Human Services are foster children and their families that participate in behavioral health services, as well as adult wards that I am the guardian for in our county. There are seven local management entities and MCOs across the state, and Cardinal is one of those, along with Trillium Alliance via Sand Heels East Point, and we've talked about Partners. And as you are aware, and as Mr. Downs already prefaced, we have had numerous issues over the over many years. Some of those include a lack of service array for our Cabarrus County residents, limited numbers of local placement resources for crisis needs, and often, children and adults with extended stays in emergency departments at the hospitals lacking and waiting on treatment services and placement services. There's also identified gaps in specific mental health providers and services within our county in particular, such as psychiatric, pediatric psychiatrists and psychologists, as well as a lack of respite care providers in our county, just to name a couple and some of the issues we've been dealing with. We do have limited options based on statutes and rules from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, including the Administrative Code, which we have looked at very carefully with this process. But we do have the option as a county, according to North Carolina General Statute, to choose our LME MCO as a county. Cabarrus County has been engaged in conversations for a good while with our neighboring county, Union County, regarding similar issues that I just mentioned. Earlier this afternoon, their Board of Commissioners unanimously voted to adopt a similar resolution that we're bringing before you this evening. Based on information gathered, we engaged in conversations also with Partners Health Management, which is a local management entity with nine counties currently based in Gaston County, and they have satellite offices in Elkin and Hickory. We believe we are better aligned with the values of Partners Health Management, and we do have CEO Rhett Melton on the meeting tonight. And toward the end, we'll open it up for questions you may have for him, and he might like to say something. Partners is willing and able to move forward with us as part of their service area. We will work with both Cardinal and Partners to ensure no disruption in services to our citizens or our providers. Partners is committed to ensure all current providers contracted and in good standing with Cardinal and serving in our county will be contracted with Partners Health Management. Partners intends to honor, and this is critical for our consumers, the clients that receive these services, they will honor the consumer service authorizations, the annual plans and other documentation and decisions that are essential to ensure a smooth transition. That continuity of care is extremely important and the number one priority for the request of this transition. It is about a nine-month process, and we are asking to begin the process with this resolution and your consideration of adopting it this evening. So the action requested is to adopt the resolution expressing a desire to disengage and begin a realignment process. At this time, I will read the resolution, and then I'll close with a little summary. Whereas North Carolina General Statute 122C-115A3 empowers a county to choose its local management entity managed care organization, LME MCO, subject to the approval of the Secretary of the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. And whereas Cabarrus County and Union County representatives have had have had productive discussions and engagement with Partners Health Management and LME MCO in good standing with the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. And whereas Partners operates in a manner that is very inclusive, innovative, and engaging with local agencies, stakeholders, and community partners. And whereas Partners is committed to its purpose of improving lives and strengthening communities. And Partners' values align well with those of Cabarrus County and Union County. And whereas Partners' priorities and projects align well with the county's responsibility to citizens with behavioral health and intellectual developmental disability needs. And whereas Partners can ensure continuity of care for citizens needing care during a transitional time, and is fully committed to continuing to contract with all service providers in good standing. And whereas Partners internal and external culture aligns with the expectations of Cabarrus and Union Counties in meeting the needs of our citizens. And whereas both Cabarrus and Union Counties desire to ensure the highest quality of services available to meet the needs of county residents and ensure continuity of care. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the County of Cabarrus as follows. Number one, Cabarrus County seeks to disengage from Cardinal Innovations Healthcare and to join Partners Health Management. Number two, the Commissioners direct and empower the county manager and others to complete all necessary steps to effect this change in accordance with guiding statute and rules in the most expeditious manner possible. And three, the Commissioners hereby authorize the county manager to work with the county attorney and staff to prepare any documentation and/or publication, including any letter of intent, plans, or procedures. So we're asking for the adoption of this resolution that I just reviewed with you that provides authorization for the county manager to move forward to prepare documents, plans, and other needed items. Those include a letter of intent that will be sent to the North Carolina Department of Human Services Secretary Mandy Cohen. It also includes a disengagement plan that will be provided on our website, and there will be an opportunity for public comment that runs for 60 days. And then beyond those 60 days, there is a 30-day period where the comments are available for view only. So it is an open, transparent process and opportunity for public input from citizens, stakeholders, community partners, and anyone with an interest in this particular issue. The website that we will have these documents posted on should you move forward with the resolution and adoption will be posted for that public comment, and that will include the resolution I just read, the letter of intent, and also the disengagement plan. We will have those posted as early as tomorrow at www.cabarruscounty.us/mentalhealth.realign. Let me repeat that. www.cabarruscounty.us/mentalhealthaltogether.realign. And so this concludes my presentation. And at this time, I will see if you have any questions for myself or also for Mr. Rhett Melton, who is with Partners Health Management.
Thank you, Karen. We appreciate that presentation. Commissioners, this is not a new topic for us. We've discussed it on other occasions. Do any of you have any questions for Ms. Calhoun?
No questions for me, Mr. Chair.
Okay, and Mr. Melton, we appreciate you being with us tonight. I'd like to give you a moment to make any any comments that you might would like to make.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, and Karen and Mike as well. Just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to be a part of your meeting. As Karen mentioned, we talked a lot about values at Partners and aligning values. And I think it's critical that she mentioned that in the pursuit of a partnership, you know, Partners would be interested in partnering, as we mentioned, with all of our current counties when our values align. And I think in the conversations that we've had here, that's the case as well. And I heard a couple of comments, and Mr. Chair, I think you referred to it earlier as willing teams, and I heard collaboration, I heard partnership earlier tonight. And that that really are some of the terms that describe who we are and how we go about our business. We believe that it's critical for the counties that we serve to partner with the members that we serve, to partner with the providers who deliver the care, and to partner with community organizations and community agencies like DSS and school systems and others. So again, very humbled and flattered that you would consider Partners in your quest for care for your citizens, and certainly able to answer any questions that you or the other Commissioners might have. But again, thank you for the opportunity.
Great. Thank you very much. Commissioners, any any questions for either Karen or Rhett?
I don't have any at this time either. I think we've had some discussions, so.
Yes, great.
I'm sorry, no, I was muted. I'm sorry. No questions, but I did want to reiterate your comment that this is not the first time that we have talked about this. And again, for the for the public's consumption, I joined the board in January of 2017, and within two, three months of that, of joining the board, was involved with a stakeholder meeting with 12, maybe 15 stakeholders regarding Cardinal and the issues we were having with Cabarrus County. So it and I'm sure it predates me going back to the board, but that at least is the reference point that I have for how long this is. We've tried to work through some some issues. So I just, again, for the for the viewing audience and the citizens of the county, this is not something that we just have decided to do on a lark or a whim. So it's to a lot of people, this is long overdue.
Right. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a comment. As all of you know, that I have been for the last, I guess it's been about two years, the liaison to the Cabarrus County Commission, to the County Commission Advisory Board for Cardinal. And, you know, if you remember, I don't think you said this, Blake Patty was talking to me at the same time, so I don't think you said this. But if all of you will remember, a little over two years ago, the Department of Health and Human Services, which was Dr. Mandy Cohen, they shut down Cardinal, the board there, and they appointed this advisory board, which I'm a part of, where they tried to reorganize and recruit new board members for the Cardinal Innovations. And even doing that, we've even replaced several of the board of members there. And, you know, I know the way that it's been, we've talked about the issues that Ms. Calhoun had spoke about earlier. And for years and years and years, these same issues just keep coming up. And and so anyway, without getting too deep in the weeds, you know, this is something that has been not just happened overnight. It's something that has been brewing for quite some time. And even after all the changes that the Department of Health and Human Services made with the appointment of a new board and all of that, you know, it seems as though we're not getting the way we things that we looking for, and we're looking for collaborative effort to take care of the citizens of Cabarrus County. And that's my number one goal right there, is to see to it that the citizens of Cabarrus County are taken care of, the money's made available, and it needs to be used in a wise way to the benefit of the citizens that need it. And so that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Great. Thank you, sir. Any other comments or questions? I did want to make make just a few comments, and certainly this is an issue that that we have discussed at length. This is a big piece of our mental health efforts in Cabarrus County. It's not the only piece. There are other things that we're doing in other populations that we're trying to turn to determine better ways to serve. I have had the opportunity on at least two different occasions to meet with Partners, Mr. Melton, and a number of his staff members. And I think it has been well captured in the earlier discussion. When we talk about shared values and and ways that that we serve our citizens, I think that one of the one of the most important roles of government is to to offer help and assistance to people that do not have the ability to do that for themselves. And when Ms. Calhoun talks about about our foster children in in the county, you know, I can think of no other group, and of course, the wards for the adults or seniors that that are not able to fend for themselves. That that is, there's no more vulnerable a population than those folks. And it certainly is our responsibility as elected officials to make sure that that those folks are served in the very best way. When you talk about foster children that come from a from a lot of very difficult situations, they that have needs in this area. I think that that we can do, I think we're making a wise decision on behalf of all those citizens when when we do this. So I am very much in support of it and look forward to to this going forward, being a very positive thing for for Cabarrus County. I think it's worth repeating, as Ms. Calhoun mentioned earlier, that for most of these service recipients, and there's a wide variety of of services that are involved, for many of those, they will not see a difference. They may continue to have the same provider or and then for a great many others, they will see an improvement in the level of service. So to the best of my knowledge, that no one in our county will be negatively impacted in any way at all. And certainly, we encourage people that that are taking advantage of these services, if they have concerns or questions, to contact us. And Karen listed a number of different ways where people can make public comments. And so we want this this to be a positive thing for for everybody in the county. And I think we're on track to do that. So at this time, I think there are several things that that we need to do to put this in motion. And the first one of those is a motion to approve the resolution for disengagement from Cardinal Innovations and join Partners Behavioral Health Management that Ms. Calhoun read to us earlier. So do I hear a motion to that effect?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that.
Second.
Very good. We have a motion by Commissioner Schu, a second by Commissioner Keiger to approve the resolution for disengagement. Is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, please say no. That motion passes unanimously. And then the the second item, and of course, these items are included in our agenda, and I think you have them before, but a motion, as she mentioned, the disengagement plan of action, that will be posted on the website tomorrow. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the disengagement plan of action as has been discussed.
That moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Honeycutt, a second by Commissioner Schu. Is there any discussion on this item? Is there any discussion on this item? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. And that motion also passes unanimously. And then the third item is to set a public hearing, and I'll have to call on Ms. Calhoun or County Manager Downs to give me a little guidance as to, is this the sixty day, at the end of the sixty day period that we need to set this date, or at our next meeting? Karen, do you have the answer to that question?
Since you have approved for us to move forward with the resolution and the disengagement plan, that would take place after the sixty days.
After the sixty days. So that would take us into, let's see, our regular meeting in December. Would that give us the sufficient amount of time, or does that have to be in January?
I'm thinking it would be January.
I would agree.
Yeah, I think that's probably the safest unless Mr. Cook has something different.
I agree with that.
Okay, and Lauren, can you tell me the date of our January regular meeting?
January eighteenth.
January eighteenth, thank you. Okay, so at this time, I would entertain a motion to set a public hearing date of January the eighteenth at 6:30 PM to receive comments on our disengagement.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Keiger, a second by Commissioner Honeycutt, to set a public hearing date of January eighteenth. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Please say no. And that motion also passes unanimously. Thank you so much for all of the time and effort that you have put into this, Karen and Rhett. Thank you very much for being willing to be with us tonight. We look forward to the beginning of a very productive relationship for all of us. Thank you. Okay, that concludes our new business for tonight. So at this time, we will receive updates from Commission members who serve as liaisons to municipalities or on various boards or committees. Commissioner Honeycutt?
I have two reports tonight, one from the Department of Human Services and one from the Senior Advisory. In our last meeting, there were some impressive statistics about how active our Human Services Department has been, and so I'm going to share a few of those with you if you'll give me the liberty of that. This department successfully met the USDA mandate of ninety-five percent timely processing of food and nutrition services applications at ninety-seven percent. They issued twenty thousand, one hundred and fifty pandemic EBT cards to Cabarrus County children totaling seven point four million dollars in extra food benefits between March and June of 2020. Six thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six parents and caregivers received childcare subsidy services supporting employment, and a hundred and eighty-three additional children served from the childcare waiting list. There were sixty-five thousand, three hundred and nine transportation trips provided by the Cabarrus County Transportation Services, and ninety-nine point three percent of all of those trips were provided on time. Over thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and two meals were served to seniors at Lunch Plus sites, and over twelve million dollars in child support for children in Cabarrus County was collected. So that's that report. I thought it was some good statistics to share. And then with the Senior Advisory Board, the Concord Senior Center is scheduled to open November second, Monday through Friday at 8:00 AM until 5:00 PM, for fitness center and fitness dance classes for limited numbers of participants who register in advance. No drop-in programs or outside group meetings will be allowed until further notice, and virtual online classes continue for living, healthy, and diabetes, and the Mount Pleasant Senior Center remains closed for right now. Nearly fifty thousand volunteers have received recognition delivered to their homes for service to the Active Living in Parks Department for 2020. I mean, yeah, and then the Touch a Truck, for those of you who remember, we talked about that, there was over fifty-seven organizations with over a hundred and forty-eight trucks and pieces of equipment, demos, mascots, and more, and one thousand, six hundred and forty-one citizens rode through that event. So a lot going on even with the COVID.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Honeycutt. I will say that it was my pleasure to participate in the Touch a Truck event. I was delighted to have my grandson to be able to go through there, and the only problem that I had with that was there were so many things to look at, my head was swinging back and forth, and I couldn't decide which side to look at, but it really was a very neat event. I want to go back and address one change that we need to make. When we set that public hearing for January the eighteenth, that date was off by one day. That will actually be on our regular meeting in January, will be on Tuesday, January the nineteenth, Monday, January the eighteenth is the Martin Luther King holiday, so we would adjust that public hearing to be January nineteenth. I think we can do that by consensus unless anybody has any questions or concerns. Okay, great. And we, of course, will reflect that in our regular minutes and announcements regarding that public hearing. So are there any other updates from Commission members? Okay, if not, we will move now to general comments by board members, and we would welcome those at this time.
So Chairman Morris?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to offer my compliments and thanks to the Board of Elections and the county staff for the excellent job on the early voting. All the comments that I have heard today through social media, text, emails, and just out, some are so complimentary, and how well they've been run, how nice everyone has been, and how happy everybody has been. So you don't hear that a lot these days when it comes to some of those items, but so thank you guys so much for making that happen. And there is a website for those of you who are wanting to early vote, and you are thinking about how long the lines are, and I think we can get Lauren to put that up so that if you want to check that out, it's a great site, so it tells you how long you're going to have to wait, and you can see the website up there in the corner. So can you leave that up a few minutes, so if anybody wants to write that down? But anyway, thanks so much for the great job you guys are doing.
Great. Thank you for those comments, Commissioner Honeycutt, and I too have heard nothing but positive comments about the experience. Our Board of Elections did an excellent job. I think the state of North Carolina originally was going to require Cabarrus County to have seven individual early voting sites, which was going to be a challenge to find that many locations where people could be appropriately social-distanced to keep everybody safe. It was also going to be a challenge to find the number of workers to man those seven different sites, but because of their efforts securing the larger locations, that they were able to make arrangements to use, which include the Cabarrus Arena, as well as Northern Plaza at 840 Concord Parkway, and then the Embassy Suites is another new site along with Kannapolis Train Station, but they are saving the county quite a bit by making those arrangements. And as we said earlier, folks have been very pleasantly surprised with the service that they've received. So thank you to the Board of Elections for an excellent job on that. We encourage people to vote as you choose. As was stated, those early voting sites will be open through October 31st, and then we will have the regular precincts all open on Election Day in two weeks. So it's getting closer than we might have thought. Seems like time flies. Are there any other general comments by board members? Okay, hearing none. We do not have need of a closed session tonight, so at this time, I would entertain a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Schu and a second by Commissioner Honeycutt. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. So we now stand adjourned, and we thank all of our television audience for joining us tonight, and we look forward to seeing you in a few weeks. Thank you.